All right, it is 7:30, it's Monday, it's January 18th. This is the Brainerd City Council, so if you made a wrong turn, you're in the wrong place. We are going to call the meeting to order and ask Acting Administrator Hillman to call the roll.
Johnson?
Here.
Pritchett?
Here.
Stengline?
Here.
Erickson?
Here.
Oday?
Here.
Stunick? He is here tonight, he's just not present at the moment. Bevins?
Here.
Bado?
Here.
All right, item four is the approval of the agenda.
Pledge allegiance.
Oh, yep, I apologize. Item three, the pledge of allegiance, please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, item four is the approval of the agenda. There was a couple of agendas presented, the one we're using, Tony, is the one that was at 4:00 today, correct?
Yes.
All right.
4:06.
4:06, it came out, that's the one that was sent to the paper. There are a couple of corrections, one from staff, and that's a change on 9B, which is the consideration for the special meeting. We'd like to change that to consideration of a resolution establishing the residential and commercial energy efficient loan program. So that's one change. Item two is to remove item number four from SP&amp;W. And item three is to split the public hearing if we can and have a public hearing, six and a half. And that would just allow people to speak on whatever issue they want to in public hearing, but I suspect there's people here that want to talk about sober homes and then not stay for the rest of the meeting if they don't want to. So we've got three changes. 9B, the consideration for the special meeting, gets changed to establishing the efficiency program, removing item four from SP&amp;W, and adding an extended public forum at 6:00.
Move approval with the changes, second?
We have a motion by Johnson, a second by Erickson, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, we are underway. All right, item five is the consent calendar. This is a notice to the public that all matters listed are considered routine by the council and will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless good cause is shown prior to the time the council votes on the motion to be adopted by roll call. Is there a motion to adopt the consent calendar?
No move, second?
Motion by Pritchett, second by Oday, was it?
Sure.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Acting Administrator Hillman, will you call the roll?
Pritchett?
Yes.
Stengline?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Oday?
Yes.
Stunick?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yep.
Bevins?
Yes, that motion is adopted. Item six is the Community Member of the Month, Honorable Mayor Bado.
All right, all right, all right. So this month, we have an extra special Community Member of the Month because it is not one member, it is multiple members of the same family. For those of you who have lived in Brainerd for a while, you may know of a small establishment called Mickey's Pizza and Subs. I myself am a gigantic fan of the taco pizza, specifically the Taco Grande. If you have not had the Taco Grande, have you really ever had pizza? I argue you have not. But, as you're aware, the Community Member of the Month award is an award that we give out to people in the community that are going above and beyond, and it's really meant to be something that celebrates people that do the little things and don't do it for praise, but do it because it's the right thing to do and it's a part of who they are. And so, in 2022, Mickey's Pizza is celebrating its 40th year. I don't know if you guys enjoyed their celebration last week where there were some good deals. I, of course, had Taco Grande pizza. But, what you may not know is that later this year, they are handing the reins over to their daughter, Grace, who will be the third generation owner of Mickey's. And that's the reason why I want to celebrate them a little extra, is because we talk a lot here at City Council and in Brainerd about how we have generations of history and about how we have something that's a little bit special here. And the thing that I find so satisfying about the story of this group is that this is a business that was started in 1982 by Pat and Mickey. And one day, somebody called in sick, and their daughter's boyfriend, Tony, comes into work and he never leaves. Ever. Still there.
Jim.
Jim, I'm sorry, Jim, I apologize. I'm trying to read this into it, but Jim, I apologize. Great story. It's a great part of the community. It's great to have businesses that are local, but more importantly, as a local business, it is not a requirement that you give back, but the businesses that do are a little extra special. And I know for a fact that you guys are always there, you know, celebrating and supporting local youth sports teams, you know, donations to the historic water tower, and you're always going above and beyond. And so the story that you have and the starting of the business, the handing down the reins, and then now again, handing to the third generation is something that I want to celebrate as a community because it shows that there's a little something special. And I think Grace has had the conversation, much like myself, you know, we all left and you didn't think you were going to come back. But I'll tell you what.
And there she is.
We pull you back in. That's what we do here. So this month, we would like to celebrate Gracie Cezak, as well as the entire three generations of owners of Mickey's Pizzas and Sub are Community Members of the Month.
This is the most important part? Part where you get to shake my hand?
Oh, don't drop that. Yeah.
Just a little heads up, I received this earlier tonight and signed it. We spelled the name Mickey's wrong on the original certificate, so we quickly ditched the guy.
And by we, I mean Tony.
City boss, something got thrown on her.
Correct spelling of the business that's been in our town for 40 years.
If only they had a big sign on history.
But you got Cezak, right?
I did.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The Yankee pot roasts up. I'll take the Yankee pot roast over the taco.
End of report.
Thank you. Jimmy, before you leave, I think I'm only a few points away from five bucks off on my thing, so.
We'll look that up when you come in.
Mickey himself made my double deluxe last time. You keep the old man working? Yeah, right? You never leave. Once you get a job there, you never leave, that's what I heard. Next up is the Public Forum, Part A. And the reason I asked for this is because there were some people that wanted to speak, and it looked like we were going to have a fairly big public forum, and I wanted them to be able to speak early in the agenda so then they could calm down and relax when they stayed for the rest of it, to the Public Forum, Part Two. You can, so we're going to open this part of the public forum. Remember to the council, this is a public forum. This is the time for citizens to bring to us items that are not on the agenda. So we let them speak. It's not necessarily that we have to do any action or that we have to have any discussion, but listen, okay? All right, so I will open the public forum at 7:38, and this would be if you're here to talk about sober houses or anything you wanted. This is your time to address the council with any of your concerns, okay? But I know we were asked about sober houses, so this would be the time. And we want to put you on early, just in case you have something better to do later. So I can't believe that would be the case. So come forward, you do need to state your name and address, and we'll, I promise we'll listen to your concerns. We like to have you keep it to three to five minutes, but I know this is, there's some big concerns out there, so we'll try and listen. Come forward.
My name is Kay Adler, and I live at 456 Tyrell Drive, and I have a few questions about the sober homes. We were here in October, and then Ms. Havercamp had come apparently a week after that or something. And my question is, when I read the article in the Brainerd paper, I was wondering what they meant when they said the sober homes were well-supervised. What does that mean?
Kay, this is your time to address us. If you've got a, the dispatch person is Teresa Bork, and she'll gladly answer any questions about her article, but we're not going to do that now because it'd be question and answer and all that kind of stuff. So please, raise your hand so she knows who you are, and if you've got questions about her article, you can either talk to her after the meeting, or get her number, or call her at the dispatch, but we can't.
So this is not about that at this time?
Right, it wouldn't be a question and answer because we wouldn't be able to answer what was written in the dispatch.
Okay.
And I apologize, but we're glad you came to speak. Unless Teresa runs against Kelly this year. Anybody else, please come forward.
My name is Helen Puckrep, hi Kelly.
Hi.
440 Tyrell. I do not feel safe anymore, I'm a recent widow, and I used to walk my dog around the circle. Can't do that anymore. And you know, my mailbox was run down, my light post was run down, the police are always over there. I've lived there for over 30 years. When my husband was the base commander, he used to say, "You need to look at 10 years out, and that's your job. You should be looking 10 years out. What are you leaving us? What are you leaving us? We try so hard to be good neighbors to each other. Who the hell ever brought this together is wrong? I went to the cities for Christmas. When I got back, my neighbors all said, 'Don't worry about a thing.' That's what good neighbors do. Don't worry about a thing while you're gone. Packages were delivered, they came and helped put them in my house. That's what good neighbors do. I have four little children that live in my neighborhood. I live on the riverside, my house is 4,000 square feet. That's the bottom, the ones that live on the river. All the others are smaller, but they're great neighbors. And you should be ashamed of yourself for letting this come into a small neighborhood. Couldn't you have found a big neighborhood? And you know what they need, I think, and I don't know much, but I do know one thing. They need to go to a place that they can play soccer, that they can ice skate, that they can play tennis, they can swim. These people need help. Just giving them a damn sober house is not what they need. And I know for my neighborhood, I worry about the young people that are there because our property values have, and I worry about them because they're young, and they have little kids, and they're expecting. What is their future in that neighborhood, which we were all so proud of it until recently? And so many don't feel safe anymore. The police are there all the time, right? They're there. We never had police in our neighborhood, but we do now. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your testimony. Anybody else? Have anything, anything that's not on the agenda, this is your time.
I don't need this right.
My name's Steve Sewer, I live at 450 Tyrell Drive. And just to reiterate, I had no idea what everybody else was going to say, but my topic tonight is also safety. You know, Helen is right in the regard that, we've lived there 17 years, but I've been in the Brainerd between Baxter, Brainerd, and Eswa for 43 years. So I do know the area, and that was one of the reasons why we purchased a home there too. We all do know each other. We've taken the time to become a community, to know each other, we trust each other, we don't have to worry about, we never locked our doors, hardly ever, even if we were gone overnight sometimes. We didn't need to because we were our own community. But it is a safety issue. And what's happened, I'm probably one of the few that doesn't fear, a year in Vietnam cured me of that fear thing, so I'm not afraid of much of anything, but I see what's happening to a lot of the people that are living there. And when that safe and secure feeling is replaced by fear, it wasn't us that created that environment. Now, on the other hand, I have not ever disparaged or said anything disparaging about the people, the residents in a sober home, for the simple fact that I myself am a recovering alcoholic for 32 and a half years, and for the last 30, I've devoted a lot of my time to helping other people that want to change their life. The people that are residents in the sober homes, that's what they want, and right now it's a temporary place for them to be safe. But I don't think that they're even safe, and one of the rules says, "No drugs or alcohol." But yet, in the morning, not that long ago, I wheeled into the, into the neighborhood, and there's a pile of Miller Highlight beer cans out in the backyard at 470, yeah. About an hour later, they were gone. One of the other neighbors, earlier before the snow came, experienced the same thing in the other house at 460. And he finally got tired of picking his stuff up because stuff was ending up in his yard, so he just told whoever was there, "You know, you can pick your own stuff up." Being involved with people that are in recovery, being involved with people that have relapsed. Currently, I'm working with a single mom who relapsed after three months coming out of Hazelton, one of the best treatment centers around. She's trying, but you know, life got in the way, but she's back on the road to recovery again. This is what I do, so I understand alcoholism, not so much drug addiction, but alcoholism, I do, I get it. And I know what the alcoholic mind does think a lot of times. But just to give you some little background, so, I mean, I know of what I speak, okay? But that safety, that safe, secure feeling in many people, the residents now, is gone. And Helen mentioned it too. And it wasn't created by us. We've talked many times about the, just drive careful through there. Just a week ago, here comes the Blue Blazer coming up the hill past 460, and fortunately, I spotted him out of the corner of my eye, he didn't slow down at all, but I backed off. He ended up going out of control and was going south and ended up with the front end of the vehicle in the snowbank. Now, that's where they pick up the kids for school, too. So we've mentioned it, we brought it forward two or three times now, but nothing changes there. And to me, my personal opinion, and that's what it is, there's a lack of supervision. We're told that they are there all the time watchering. Well, I guess I would need a definition on what "all the time" means, because I rarely see their car there, rarely. I have no idea what the turnover is there, it doesn't matter, because I believe that all of the people coming into the sober homes have hit rock bottom for the most part, and they just want a chance to get back into our normal life. As far as developing community, I don't think when you drive by somebody giving you the finger is going to create any kind of a good, positive dialogue. So consequently, we don't drive out of the neighborhood that way anymore, we go the other way, which in itself is wrong. We should be able to go either way. But these are the things, and all we ever get is, "Well, we're protected by the Fair Housing Act and the American Disabilities Act." And that's true, I don't dispute that. But some things got to be done. You know, we've suggested, take a look at St. Paul's. All the guidelines that they have, it's nothing too restrictive. It's distancing, it's how many people can occupy the house. And I know that the sober houses are subject to, I believe it's an annual inspection to make sure they're up to code on everything. And that isn't the issue. And again, our issue is not so much with the residents, it's with the owners of the sober homes. And they are a business, that's what they are. You know, so we just, we looked at the, and the safety, I kept getting back to the safety end of it because that was the biggest thing that I was hearing, was that people just don't feel safe in their home anymore. And I'm sure some of the other people are probably going to come up and talk and mention that too. And I do have a few other issues, but they're not, one of the guys that wanted to be here has COVID, so he printed up stuff for me, but I'll do that when it's his turn, okay? I did have a chat with Chief Bestial last week, and I don't know if this is, I think if it were happening in your neighborhood, you would probably feel that this was pretty important. Since August 21st, to date, which is less than five months, there have been 14 police calls to the two addresses. 10 to one house, four to the other one. Two were medical events, one, a death occurred. Now, I don't look at the other house over on 10th Street because, in my opinion, that one is ideally situated. You know, we're a cul-de-sac neighborhood, one way in, one way out. Parking, I don't know that there's ever been a parking plan submitted for the residences that we have in Tyrell Hills, I have no idea. But I do know this, and we brought this to, actually, one of the vehicles did get towed. I believe there is an ordinance on file about parking on the lawn, parking in your yard.
Yes.
If there's not enough room, and again, this is, it's a repeat of stuff that we've already addressed, that no corrective action is taking place, none, not by the owners, and of course, not by the city. So if there's not a parking plan in place, I know it's on the application. It seems like everything was just kind of overlooked. You know, we've got our money, time, and everything else invested. And granted, all properties did go up in the last couple of years. That was due to a shortage. That's why they went up. But if you go to sell now, when you disclose that there's two group homes in your neighborhood, and there's only 26 homes in there, a couple of things are going to take place. You're really going to get lowballed, or the people are just going to walk away, and you're going to be listed for a long, long time, in a day and age where properties usually go over what they're worth right now, currently, and they're sold typically in one day. So this is what's happening, and there are a lot of other cities. I and my, one of my neighbors have done a lot of research on sober homes across the nation, just to see what's happening. They never used to look at or even consider the integrity of the neighborhood prior to sober homes, but they are now. They've had years of experience to see what the outcome is, and don't get me wrong, some are very successful. And it does serve a need, we've never questioned that. There is a need, but find the right location that's going to serve not only the community, but to serve the residents of that sober home. Because they deserve that. And speaking as somebody that's been in recovery for 32 years, I can tell you, it's an important service, it really is, just the wrong venue. And I think that's what needs to be addressed by the City Council and planning. You know, it was mentioned one time that we did have a petition and signed it, "No more sober homes," you know, in Tyrell Hills. A couple of people didn't sign it. Two of them were two sisters that live right next door to the one at 460 that were brand-new to the neighborhood, and they didn't really want to get involved, and it's something they didn't know much about. No, they are involved. The other one would have been a conflict of interest, because he's the Planning Commission Chairman, so that would have been a conflict. So there's a reason why two people didn't sign it, and that was it, otherwise the entire neighborhood was for it. So safety is a big concern, it's a big concern with me, only because a lot of the other people have brought it to me. I don't know how I ever ended up in this position as spokesperson, but somehow I did. We don't, I don't function, Kelly's known me for 40 years. I do not operate on hearsay or rumors, I just don't do that. It's facts. When Chief Bestial and I talked, said the same thing, it's kind of like the old Dragnet series, Jack Webb, "Just the facts, ma'am." Some of you'll know that, and that's what we talked about. And I was surprised even to know that there were that many calls. I knew there were some, and when the call comes, this scares the hell out of the kids, and I'll tell you why. All of a sudden, there's four or five squads coming in. Now, usually if there's four or five squads, that tells me that something serious happened. So the kids start asking mom and dad, "How come there's always so many police cars here?" You know, think about this. If you have children, ours are all grown, but we have grandkids. Until now, we never had a security system in our house. We do now. So there's been, in my opinion, a negative impact thus far. And I don't know where we go from here, I think my wife is going to address the committee, but something needs to be done, there needs to be some kind of regulation. I know right now, in legislation, in legislation for St. Paul, they're actually looking at expanding. It hasn't gone through yet, but they want to go a quarter mile, 1,320 feet between, for the distancing between sober homes. So you see, stuff has happened over the years that has impacted a lot of communities in a negative manner, and it doesn't need to be that way. But there really is not much communication. I got accused of harassment, but that was over a backyard parking deal in poor and Class 5, and all I said was, "You might want to check on impervious coverage because you may, you may not have the room to do it, and you'll just have to pull all your Class 5 back out." So I got told I was harassing. I'm not harassing anybody. I live there. I want it to be the neighborhood that it always has been, safe, secure, and a community, plain and simple. I'll be up later to talk, what Bruce gave me to talk to, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? While you're walking up, Mary, I just want to remind everybody who's in the audience, while somebody's speaking, everybody else has to be quiet. Show some respect, no hoots and hollers, no yays or nays. Okay, come on up.
Are you speaking specifically to me?
Not at all.
I thought he was talking to me.
I was.
Thanks, Kelly.
Well, I taught first grade, and you guys are a lot more threatening than first graders, so I had to write this down, otherwise I thought I'd just ramble. So my name is Mary Sewer, and my address is 450 Tyrell Drive. I'd like to start by saying that when I learned about a sober house in our neighborhood, I wasn't worried because I talked to Sheila Havercamp, and she assured me that the houses would be well-supervised. I thanked her for the update, I also told her that if there were any problems, I would support, I would say something, and she supported that, said, "Good, that's, that's great." Now I'm saying something. There are four residents who couldn't be here tonight because they're out of town, otherwise they would have come. There are two others who couldn't come because of COVID. They all told me that because of what has occurred at the houses recently, they're extremely concerned, and yes, they feel unsafe. When that petition originally passed around Tyrell Drive, only the residents in two houses declined to sign it. The other residents who didn't sign just weren't home, and we were walking around in about an hour. Because there have been so many police cars with flashing lights, my husband and I have installed a security system with cameras, we never used to lock our doors. Our front window faces one of the houses, so when I walk past into the living room, I can see, right there. I can see the activity, and I no longer feel safe in my I can see the activity and I no longer feel safe in my own neighborhood because of what's happening over there. As you have been told, there have been 14 calls to the police, 14. All with flashing lights, ambulance, that's not good. One of the calls resulted in the death of a resident. So as I stood and watched, flashing lights, I see them roll out, somebody, that's not good. Another call result, resulted in a resident being taken away in an ambulance. If any of you council members observe many police cars with flashing lights, many times, one of the times there were seven. In your neighborhood, don't you think you'd be extremely concerned as well? If all of you council members have not driven through our neighborhood, you should. You should. You'll see that there's only one entrance to our neighborhood. So in case of emergency, and if that entrance were to be blocked, we'd have no way to get out. At the last meeting, when our concerns were heard, the council formed a committee. We'd all like to know what that committee has done. We can't continue to go to meetings like this with nothing ever being accomplished. Please help us now before something else even more severe than one death happens. Our concern tonight doesn't mean that we're bad neighbors or bad people. It just means that we're concerned about our own family, the, the welfare of our family, the welfare of our friends, and of everybody in the neighborhood.
Thank you, Mary. Anybody else have anything they'd like to say, if it's not on the agenda tonight? Welcome, please, please state your name and address.
I'm at 462 Tyrell. My name's Dale Anselman.
Thanks.
I got a question, in October, we talked about doing something with the streets, and parking regulations in the winter, have anything been done?
On parking regulations in the winter? No.
Nothing, are they going to?
Uh, it's not even on the agenda right now.
Why is that?
Um, I don't know, nobody has proposed any changes.
They talked about it in October.
I was here.
As a matter of fact, the one guy, I don't know who he was over there, said he was all for it.
I apologize, you have me at a disadvantage.
Well, we're just, you know, it's, it's a problem, if the cars aren't off the street, and it, and they come with the snowplow, it makes a mess. That's the only thing we're concerned about. Now, my, my next thing is, you know, I live on a hill there. You, you, I don't think you people realize the drug problem you have down there, I see it. You know where the woods is off, off the Second Street Extension, it's all wooded there, the ravine, you ever been in there or down there?
Keep going.
Well, I, I, I'm watching people, not so much now, because we got two feet of snow for them to walk through. But in the summer, there's, there's kids on bikes and everything going up and, up in all of that woods constantly. The other day, you know, you know Jackson Street, there's the old extension there, that's gravel, still dirt, down there, goes to the river. Probably was old, river road, I don't know. But there's a lot of cars come down through there in the summer, constantly. Well, I watched this one individual walking down the street, coming from this, coming, he come from town, walked down that gravel, walked up, walked over to where your, the sewer mound is, you know, there's a sewer pump station. He put stuff in back of a pipe there, and then he goes, the next day I watch him, he come down, got it. He went down about 200 feet down that road, and I don't know what he was doing, rolling weeds, or, I don't know, but it, it's constant, people going down to the river and coming back in about two minutes. I don't know if they're dropping stuff off in there. And I don't know what you can do about it, but the drug problem is bad, very, very bad, I watch it, I sit right on top of the hill and see it all. You know, I, if there's nobody watching these guys in these sober houses, they come and go as they please. How does, how does anybody know what they're bringing back in there? I pick up the booze bottles and the beer cans, so I know they, they, they have a drink down there. But nothing I can do about it. I just wanted to let you know that you've got a problem with, with drugs down in that hole there. I don't know if that's your major problem, or if that's where it's coming from, but they're there.
Glad to hear about it.
You know, I, that's, I don't know what else to tell you, they're, they're, they're there, I don't go down there. I used to walk to the river bottoms all the time. I put my 380 in here now, because I don't trust them down there anymore, I don't know who's down there. So, hopefully they can do something with it.
Thank you.
But I'd like to see them, if they do work on something, to get this street straightened out for us. Otherwise, the plowing is going to be just as bad as it ever was. Okay?
Thank you.
This is actually for, I'm reading this from Bruce Janowick. I don't know what he's, he's right next door to me. But before I do this, I, Mike, I really want to thank you especially, because Mike has gone the extra yard with us by having patrols come through there every now and then, every so often, and we do appreciate that, we really do. And I really appreciated the meeting the other day with you. You opened my eyes a little bit more, so. I work right directly for the last seven years with law enforcement, throughout the county. So, um, I have a very high regard for law enforcement, and that, um, anyhow, thank you, I appreciate it. And again, this is from Bruce Janowick. And he has done hours and hours, actually both of us have, but Bruce more than myself, as far as researching history on sober homes, outcomes, and again, run properly, manage properly, having an actual, um, in-house person, manager, supervisor, whatever you want to refer to them as. They seem to be the ones that are the most successful, and it's a healthier environment, because one of the things with alcoholism, you, while you're using, you typically don't, accountability is just another word in the dictionary, pretty much, and I speak of myself, okay? But in working with other people the last 30 years, I know that that is an issue. And what, what a properly-run sober home will do, it will teach those things, they will learn that by being accountable, by having to be responsible. For lack of another word, they're basically in a transition right now, and the goal is to work back into a community and be part of a productive community. I get that, I think it's an awesome idea, there is a place for them, no question about it. And again, it comes back down to the, the venue. Anyhow, Bruce had wrote, written this, he said, "I had hoped that I wouldn't be delivering the same message to you as I have done twice previously. I have continued to research sober homes, and the amount of information is overwhelming. The problems you've heard about tonight regarding the sober homes in our neighborhood are not unique to Tyrell Hills neighborhood, but rather more the status quo for many communities across not only Minnesota, but across the nation." The bottom line, if there is such a thing, is number one, the need of sober homes has never been greater. The concept has been around since the mid-1800s. The need and development has been significant over the years with pronounced attention. Post-World War II in the 1960s and 70s has increased exponentially since then. The most dominant place of origin has been in California, but the need and implementation of the sober home living has spread throughout the US. Sober home living is not regulated, there are no required certifications, licenses, or government oversight. Their concept is to convert homes in single-family neighborhoods with the expectation that the neighboring homeowners will ignore or accept the impact they impose on the neighborhood and the property values. Each sober home living unit is on their own to implement whatever house rules they perceive as necessary, if any. There are self-proclaimed organizations like the NARR, National Alliance for Recovery Residences, or MASH, Minnesota Association of Sober Homes, that have created standards for sober homes, but there is no legal enforcement of their standards by the, by their subscribers, and sober home living businesses are not obligated to subscribe to these organizations. What appears to be the most significant attraction to subscribing to these organizations is the client referral benefit. This is not meant as a criticism of the NARR and MASH-type organizations. I believe they are trying to provide some guidance to sober home life model, and I believe they would be instrumental and provide valuable assistance in establishing government regulation. As a side note, many of the sober home living businesses have been quite adamant about resisting any government legislation. I am not a strong proponent of government over-regulating or overreach in my life, but there is a place and time when it is necessary. When it comes to standards and regulations that affect the rights and needs of the citizens of a community, government oversight should be involved. I believe their involvement should be defined not in a vacuum, but with the input and consultation with the existing residents and former residents of sober home living programs. Any and all professional resources experienced in addiction, resources for chemical recovery experienced, SHL, or Sober Home Living Resource Associations, and input from community representatives who have experienced sober home living in their neighborhoods. The development of these standards and regulations should also include the consideration of other US states' experience and established regulations, if any. There's a global issue and should not have a narrow focus. As a ray of hope, there is currently a proposal by State Senator Karen Housley in the Minnesota State Legislature requesting a study of potential oversight of sober house, housing programs to be performed by the Commissioner of Human Services and the Commissioner of Health, with a targeted completion date of September 15th, 2022. There's also a bill introduced by US Representative Mike Levine, California, for the studying outcomes and benchmarks for the Effective Recovery Sober Homes Act to be completed in 2022. I cite these federal and state legislative proposals not as a reason for our local government to do nothing in the interim, but to instill the thought that hope is on its way, and as a possible resource while the studies proceed. It is imperative in our, the Tyrell Hills community, expectation that Brainerd City Council will implement local ordinance to address and manage the sober home living problem. Sober home living has become a significant step in the successful recovery process for alcohol and drug addiction. When managed properly, it produces excellent results. When mismanaged, the results are not only devastating to the people relying on them to achieve sobriety and drug-free living, their families included, but also has a serious destructive impact on the affected neighborhoods that they fail in. It is important to consider over-concentration of sober homes in a neighborhood when defining planning and zoning guidelines. The focus needs to be on maintaining the integrity of the neighborhood for the good of the sober home residents, as well as the existing neighborhood residents. A negative environment is inconsistent with the objective of integrating persons with disabilities into the community. And on that note, I might add, if I were to go into a sober home in transition, and I were told, we are going to create a safe, drug-free, alcohol-free, uh, place for you to live in transition, that would be my expectation that I would get that. I don't think that's happening. Just from what we see, and as Dale Anselman had said, he sees everything right there, he's right next to the one, and he can see all the way down too where the river goes, and so he probably has a bird's eye view of everything that happens there. But again, I, I, the, the people that are residents here, they deserve what, to have what they were promised, because it's so instrumental in their recovery, and I speak with experience on that. And I'll continue to do what I do to help people in recovery, like I've done the last 30 years. My last breath, I'll probably be counseling with somebody. So, thank you for the time, I appreciate, and again, Mike, thank you.
Thank you, Steve, for Bruce's testimony. Just a reminder to the council that Bruce's written testimony is part of the October 4th council record, you all got copies of it, it's in your packet for October 4th. Anybody else wish to speak, and it doesn't have to be just on sober homes, it could be on anything, this is the public forum, extended version, so you can talk about whatever you like. It's not on the council agenda. Come on up, state your name and address.
Sheila Hevercamp, uh, actually live at 12950 Norwood Drive, Baxter, Minnesota. And I'm that owner, along with my husband Gene and my son Joe Wozniak, that operate Burlington Recovery Homes here in the Brainerd community, as well as Little Falls, so I'd say central Minnesota region, and, um, it's been hard to listen to some of the negative comments that have, um, been shared tonight, because I so disagree about how we manage and how we work to help change these people's lives and create a safe neighborhood. So, I've written a lot of notes, I'd like, and I'm not prepared, you know, in a whole formal presentation, because I'm just hearing it, um, and just jotting down thoughts and ideas, but, um, so I might not go in order. But first of all, to go to Dale's watching behind the yard, it's a shortcut to Super 1, and many of our guys shop at Super 1. And he's told me before, he sees a lot of bags coming back through that neighborhood, well, my proposal is, most likely they're groceries. Because guys, um, in the drug world don't run around in the woods to collect their drugs, they're going to drug houses in our community if they want to pick up any drugs, so. I, I don't agree at all that they're in the backwoods picking up their drugs. And yeah, we have had, um, phone calls to the police, but it has been based on, you know, there's a whole network going on in our community, including Crow Wing County Social Services, Crow Wing County Probation Officers, the Sheriff's Department, the Police Department, our sober homes, our the treatment centers, how do we address this big, um, continuum of alcoholism, drug addiction, and mental health? Because the three of them go hand in hand. And so there's an effort by many, and, and we're in regular meetings with the professionals, on how best do we try to have an impact positively in our community to make change? And one of the things we've been told is always, always call the police for welfare checks. We are not calling 911. We have a couple of times when it's been a true emergency, um, like the two when we've had people taken off in an ambulance. But most of the time, it is calling the regular police officer dispatcher, and say, we have a person in the house we're concerned about, would you come over and help us do a welfare check to determine, um, their state and, um, how we can best work with them, because they're not able to be in the house when they're using drugs and alcohol. And so if they have somehow used them and got them into the house, because it is independent living, um, and so they, we are not there 24/7, there are halfway houses, they are not what we operate. If, and I, I brought this into a meeting not long ago with several, several of the professionals, with this big continuum of what exists to treat alcoholism, addictions, and mental health. And we can start on one side with heavy use and homelessness, and we can start way to the other side, which we call the sober home. And there's everything in between, there's prisons, there's jails, there's treatment centers, there's halfway houses, there's hospitals, there's probation officers, there's ISR agents, I can go on and on with what's the continuum looks like, and how we are one small piece in the continuum to help people get healthy. And I, I have statistics, I didn't bring them today, I didn't know I was going to be doing a major formal report here on our success rates, and what the average length of stay is, what has been the shortest length of stay, what's been the longest length of stay, how we've served an 18-year-old, how we've served a 72-year-old, how we've served, served a ninth-grade education, how we've served a doctorate degree. And, um, everything in between. And, um, the men that are in our homes, um, a lot of them have had a significant history of, um, relapse. I kind of look at it like a chart, where, you know, when they get into their, their, their bad states, and they're on their way to recovery, they kind of have this graph where once in a while they might relapse, but they're continuing to eventually find their way in life, if it hasn't killed them, or it landed them in prison for the rest of their life. But, um, and I, I wish I would have brought, I thought about bringing several men with, but they will tell you. will tell you, we are the best sober home they've ever lived in. And they can laugh at us all they want, but, you know, it's the truth. And I can bring the men before you and do testimonial after testimonial. Because when we do have a guy who uses, we will call the police immediately. Once, the guys usually call us and say, "Well, we think, we suspect a man in the house is using." We immediately head over there. We have our own testing equipment. If they refuse to test, we call the cops. We call their probation officers. We will get them arrested if the probation officer will work with us. We will get them into a hospital. We will get them to detox. We will get them into mental health hospitals, mobile crisis teams. We do the whole kit and caboo. So, yeah, we do have 14 calls, but it's our team members coming to work with us to address an issue that we have a man in the house who is not healthy right now, and we need to get him help. And so we do not blind our eyes to somebody using. We address it head-on and deal with it. As far as being unsafe, I guess I don't understand that because as far as I know, I've never seen a physical altercation go on between any of the men in any of our homes. We have, you know, we totally supply the house. Our TVs aren't going missing. You know, we got big screen, large-screen TVs in the houses. We have equipment. We have tools because we help the guys fix their cars, and things aren't disappearing. I mean, so I'm not sure, if a guy is considered unsafe, our court systems do not release him from jails and prisons typically, you know? So, most of the guys we have, they've, I would say about 50% to 60% are on probation. The other 40% to 50% are not. They're just men that say, "If I go back to my old home, my old way of life, sitting in an apartment by myself, my bottle becomes my best friend because I don't have any family or loved ones." And so they do create this sense of family and support each other. So, I personally don't understand the safety concerns because I sit and have coffee with these men and go shopping and go to stores and go to movies and bowling and everything else. They're normal people, like many of us in this room. And on average, the stats are like about 10% of people in the United States of America today have addictions, alcohol, or mental health issues. And so it's just a small portion of the people, and they're trying to get help for it. As far as values, I guess I proved, I wasn't at the meeting where they said our values of all declined. I provided the Safety and Public Works Commission, and they took copies for the entire council that shows the evaluation. We went and did a whole valuation report. And I could tell you that there's been two homes that have actually sold since we came into the neighborhood, and we didn't look at them, in part because we've heard loud and clear that they prefer us not to be there, so we don't intend to buy another house in that neighborhood. But the two houses that went on the market that we didn't look at, and since we've been in the neighborhood, one sold for 48% above assessed valuation, and the other one sold at 28.75% above assessed valuation. And you know, the assessor has to be within certain radiuses, or the state assessor can come in and make adjustments. So, they're still selling, and they're selling at above assessed valuation. So, and we didn't go in and even look at the property to see if it would work for us. What else would I say? You know, the police did a study on speeding, and the fastest they were able to record was 17 miles an hour, and it was by the UPS or FedEx driver, not our guys. And also, I know that one of the, when we were having a major issue, we did have a death, and it is under investigation currently. I do know one of the neighbors kind of tried to drive through all the police, and the police were just like, "Get out of here. Go the other way. Quit butting in and trying to figure out what's going on here." And they don't come and visit us. In fact, Mary, when she said that I offered to help, I did, but she has never once called me and asked me to help with an issue. She's come to the council to address issues, but never called me personally to ask for help with an issue. Dale, I know, who spoke earlier, he's actually asked the guys to help him with tree cutting. And I can tell you that we recently pushed out a neighbor who was stuck, our guys, and we recently shoveled another neighbor's woman's driveway, and she's saying how much she loves us. And when the car or the snowplow had to go around a couple of vehicles, even if they weren't ours, my husband went out with our piece of equipment and cleaned the road so that it was nice and clean. And as far as a parking plan, we have, we might not have formally submitted a parking plan with 460 and 470, but we did a report on average how many cars we have and how we have more than adequate parking, because we have parking not only in the front, but also in the back. And according to Brainerd ordinance, we can park in the backyards without it being gravelled or paved. And we did offer to gravel, yeah, on the grass, because we can legally park on the grass, but if it wasn't allowed, we did say that we would pave and/or gravel it if that's what the city desired us to do. We have never not tried to follow any rule. If you have asked us to do something, and I talk to David Chansky and James regularly, we have followed every rule or request that has been asked. So, we have tried to be good neighbors. We are starting to feel like we are being discriminated against, that we are being judged, and there's a significant prejudice, prejudice against us and alcoholics and addicts and mental health, because they go hand in hand. Several of our guys have mental health issues. And it doesn't feel good anymore. At first, I felt really good about being in this neighborhood and being in our community and doing all of this great work, and I do still feel our work is great, and we will not quit doing our work because we're that passionate about it as a family. But it doesn't feel good with the neighborhood we're in, and I find it quite amazing that I drive around the neighborhood and I see all these big signs, you know, "Love is love" and "Be kind to everyone," and it doesn't feel, the guys will say that they are not treated with kindness. They are treated and are being like they're not part of the neighborhood. They are not, it was referred to at one of the meetings, like they're not even citizens. Like, they're all citizens, but we're not. So, it's starting to feel really uncomfortable and not good, to be honest with you. And it's concerning to me because we are legally protected, and this is exactly why the rules were made, because this is how you get treated when you have a disability that is truly recognized by the United States of America. What else did I have written down that I thought? You know, Minnesota Association of Sober Homes is who I worked with to get everything set up, so I'm very well aware of MASH. I'm very well aware of legislation, and I follow it, and actually try to be on the committee to help guide and form it. So, I would guess I'd just answer more questions. I might have other team members that are interested in speaking. But I guess I would say this, that the Brainerd City Council, the Brainerd management team members, like your police chief, like your planning and zoning commission, and everyone else, your, all your building inspectors and your planners are wonderful. We follow all rental codes. We bring them in and ask them to come and check. We even do extra because we want to make sure 100% everybody's safe. And you can ask your team that because we care deeply about these men, and we go way out of our way to help them be successful. And we are an independent sober living. And if the POs and/or family members decide that this individual is not a candidate for independent living, they go to a different type of living environment, which he does as well to care for them. So, with that, I will conclude.
Thank you, Sheila. I think we'll go another 10 minutes if there's anybody else that wishes to speak. Now, this is just an extension of the scheduled public forum. So, when we break here in 10 minutes, it'll have been an hour, and we'll continue this later in the, in the agenda when it was normally scheduled. I knew there would be a lot of people that wanted to speak, and I wanted to give everybody a chance as early in the agenda as possible if they didn't want to stay till the end. So, anybody in the last 10 minutes wants, who hasn't spoke, and remember, the public forum will continue later in the agenda. Come on up. We'll start, let him speak. He hasn't spoken yet before we start round two.
Mike DuVall, 468 Tyrell Drive. This is the second time I've attended a city council meeting for an agenda item where I was asked to maybe provide some technical input on a topic on your agenda and found myself awkwardly in the audience, hearing a discussion about sober homes in my neighborhood. And I sat on my hands the last time, and I just can't sit on my hands a second time. So, I'd like to speak to a few of the points that I've heard tonight. You know, I think, you know, Sheila talked about the property values thing, and Steve talked about using data, and we should think about this from a data perspective. I think folks have acknowledged their fears, and fear is an emotion. You can probably make a fact out of that, but what's driving that fear, I'm not sure. We've seen it in the neighborhood. We haven't seen crime affecting us in the neighborhood. We haven't seen assaults affecting us in the neighborhood, you know, thefts and things like that. It's just, it's fear of the unknown in certain ways or what could be, but if you look at the data, it's really not been playing out that way. You know, the idea acknowledged by many people speaking here about this being a healthful way to recover from addiction, but it's terrifically difficult in my mind to be successful in an environment where you're a pariah. And, you know, the innuendo that we're hearing, sort of dehumanizing, and I think we have to make this personal. I mean, the lights from the police and the lights from the ambulance, someone did die, and we should have a little bit of compassion about that and maybe, maybe try and, maybe try and understand the other people living in the house, maybe the grief that they knew this person, they lived with this person for however long. I mean, that affects a little bit about the morale of a house. You know, my interactions, I live next to one of the properties, and my interactions have been similar to some of the others that live adjacent. These are good people, all right? They're working on problems in their life and good things. If I were judged on some of the bad choices I've made in my life and the bad things I've done in my life, I would, I would probably wither under some of that criticism as well or that scorn. But I guess the key point here is, is they've helped out people with difficult chores in their yard. I mean, these are people that have the ability to do these things where some of the people in the neighborhood just can't. Taking down trees that are a nuisance or a threat to a house or what have you. You know, and some of this is compensation, and some of it is just out of goodwill, just, you know, boom, they cut some of my grass in my yard. It's just, well, I had the mower out, and let's just, you know, I just felt like, we'll just do that. Looked like you were getting a little behind, and I was because I've had a very, very busy summer, and appreciate that. But that was not asked. It was just out of the goodwill. You know, there have been a lot of blue lights and red and white lights in the neighborhood, but they don't all resolve back to these properties. And I think we have to just look around and just think about our neighborhood as a whole and talk about the, you know, that we have had, well, about a year ago, I had an ambulance at my house, you know? And the police came first, then the ambulance arrives, and they, you know, it was to help my family. You know, I don't know if I would be drummed out of the neighborhood for that. And the same across the circle. This city council gave a shout-out to Lieutenant Colzer for his work on a vehicle incident in Tyrell Hills and the work that he did, what, again, this intervention before the ambulance staff come. And this council gave him a shout-out for great work, you know? These things happen in our neighborhood, and we've had individuals, you know, arrested for serious crimes in our neighborhood that don't live in these homes. And so, let's be, let's be honest with ourselves, and let's look at the nature of the problems that are being experienced in the neighborhood. And I don't think any of these things are things that we can solve or whether they need to be solved, you know? I would solve the things that are facts, and we're hearing things about parking, that's a fact, you know? I would think that if the city council were to, quite frankly, just in either action or in the ordinance, just, here's, here's, here's something about where we stand on sober homes. That would be helpful in de-escalating the conflict in my mind. And there are places where I think there can be effective dialogue to solve the real issues that people are encountering. I mean, we had, again, I think the parking is one that seems to be coming up on the conversation in October and again tonight, that maybe there's places to go. And I think Sheila was mentioning, and Joe has as well, they've been trying to address some of these things on their parking, on their properties by getting the vehicles off of the main roads themselves and either in the back or parking on the grass or what have you to make it easier for plows to work around, but also in the summertime, you know, just the openness of the road. And so, so I, you know, I think it was mentioned here this evening that I didn't sign a petition because of a conflict of interest. Well, that's, once again, it's assigning, you know, reasons to something that, you know, I did not express why I didn't sign that, but I'll tell you why I didn't sign. I'm not fully on board that these don't belong. The concept, I think everyone's agreed, these have value in our, in our community, so let's figure it out. We're in the figuring-out place, so it's a little bit bumpy. We can get to a place where I think it's less contentious in everyone's neighborhood where these will perhaps arise. But right now, we have something that's, I don't think the city has taken a firm position on this to say, "Here's where we're at." And I think the ambiguity is feeding all of the conflict that keeps coming back to this body on a regular enough basis. Maybe it's time to figure out where are we as a city on this issue and firmly state that so that we can move on from the conflict to the problem-solving phase. I think that's enough for now, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Two minutes, and then we're going to take a break from the open public forum. She hasn't spoke yet, Steve.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You'll get plenty of time in the second hour of public forum if need be. Please state your name and address.
I'm Megan. I'm, um, Megan Adams with Burlington Recovery Homes. I'm Sheila's daughter. So, I am new to the whole sober house thing. I'm just starting my own with my mom and dad on near, sorry, moving my train of thought here. Anyway, I'm new to the sober homes, and I am thrilled to learn from them. My mom is the most compassionate, capable woman I know, so I hope everyone just keeps an open mind and knowing that she will work with you if you bring her, your concerns right to her. And just really remain open-minded. She's really compassionate about this all. She wants it to work. She wants to work in harmony with everyone around her for the sake of the whole Burlington Recovery Homes and especially the residents in them. So, just please bring concerns to her, and she'll work with you. I guess I don't have much to say, but I'm thrilled to work with her and on their team, and thank you.
Thanks for coming, Megan. Close us out, Steve, for the first part.
I just want to make a statement.
I know you do.
Right from the get-go, in this, I can only speak for myself.
Can I just interrupt?
Steve Sauer, 450 Tyrell Drive.
Thank you. All right.
Sorry. I have taken a stand personally because of my past, okay? And being involved in recovery for decades. And I said it at first meeting, and I still feel that way about it. I will never disparage an individual person that has the courage, tenacity, and is willing to work hard to change their lives from what it was. I will never disparage a person that's in that situation. I will never disparage a person that's in that situation. I was one of those people, still am. And I work with people that are also in the program continually. So I will never, ever disparage their intentions, what they're doing. My problem never was with that. It was more with the structure, and that's it. I'll finish with that.
All right. We've been an hour. We're going to suspend the public forum to its regular agenda time, where you'll get a chance to speak on anything that's not on the agenda. I'm going to ask that we just take a five-minute break, just to take a second. Mr. Chansky, during the five-minute break, the city council has voted on sober homes. You are not an employee here, but do you have any recollection of what the vote was? I do, by the way, but I thought I'd ask you because you're.
To manage them using the rental ordinance.
What's that?
To manage them using the rental code.
No, we actually voted on sober homes.
And to my knowledge is that they are allowable use and to manage them using the rental code.
That's it. That was the vote. You may not like it, but Mr. Tansky is correct. This council has voted on it. It was a long time ago, probably ten years ago, maybe?
Twenty-seventeen.
Twenty-seventeen, so it just seems like ten years ago. All right, let's take five.
Pre-COVID.
And if you're, if you're done speaking, you can go or stay.
I'm done speaking.
But we're going to do some other stuff.